All right, I call this um school board work session, regular meeting Tuesday, December eighth, twenty twenty to order. Mr. Robal, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Birdnik?
Present.
Mrs. Brancato. Mrs. Brancato, can you unmute?
Sorry, yes, I'm here.
Okay, great, uh, Mrs. Crossen?
Here.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Here.
Mr. Goddixon?
Online.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Panofsky?
I'm here.
Mr. Martin? Okay, that's eight present, we're just waiting for Mr. Martin.
Okay, maybe that pred- pledge of allegiance next?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
And to the republic for which it stands. Under government, individual, liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
And for announcements, um, I have two, um, all three tax collectors, um, after December fifteenth until the end of the year, um, no personal checks will be accepted. Um, if you have any questions, you can call two one five four four three eight two eight two. And the next one, it's actually um a food drive, um Centennial Education Association Helping Hand. They are collecting mon- monetary donations through Venmo, um, that will be put on the website at C S D dash C E A Helping Hand. If you do not have Venmo, you can mail a check to C E A P O Box two three nine six Warmster, P A, one eight nine seven four. The funds collected will be used to purchase breakfast, meal and snack items for families with children in our district who are struggling financially. The tentative date of distribution is Martin Luther King Day, January eighteenth. Did anyone else have any announcements? Okay.
Madam President, I see uh Mr. Martin for the record is joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. So if there's no other announcements, we have student presentations, um, William Tenet High School, Logan Merritts.
Hi, I hope everyone's doing well tonight. Uh, if you don't know me, my name is Logan Merritts and I'm Student Government President at the high school. And I will be sharing the tenant student report with you all today. So just make sure my mic is working.
We hear you.
Okay, cool. So winter sports have begun and teams held tryouts last month. Although the suburban one league has delayed competition until later this month. On a positive note, one of our varsity girls soccer players, Jackie Kubala, was featured in an article as suburban one athlete of the week. William Tenet's Miss Panther competition will continue this year online and will be held January twenty eighth of twenty twenty one. The candidates are Pranj Patel, Anne Clark, Dana David, Logan Merritts, Chelsea Meltzer, Karen McHugh, Kaylin Hanson and Megan Trotter. They will have their first meeting tomorrow to discuss the finer details for the competition that will take place this year. The future Business Leaders of America Club is still holding regional and state competitions despite obvious obstacles. Members will be able to choose whether to participate from home or in school for the testing next week. Additionally, the Literali Literati or English Honor Society has initiated a student book review program with a generous donation from the state. Students will read a book, write a review and possibly contribute to a new selection of the English department's curriculum. Lastly, tenant tenant guidance counselors worked together to host a financial aid last night for the class of twenty twenty one. Students and families learned how to apply for all types of financial aid, including the FAFSA and Pennsylvania specific programs. That is the end of the student report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next would be um M B I T, is it Kara McHugh?
Yeah. So hello, my name is Kara McHugh and I'm a senior William Tenet High School and I'm a level three hundred student in the Sports Therapy and Exercise Management Program at Middle Bucks. M B I T annual open house was premiered virtually for middle school and high school students on Thursday, November nineteenth of twenty twenty, beginning at six P M. The event featured a premiere video to kick off Skills USA officers. Families were able to explore the campus and learn more about programs with an interactive map, virtually meet teachers and take part in a question and answer session and using Zoom platform. Visit W W W dot M B I T dot org for more information on the virtual open house, which is still available for viewing. Pennsylvania Department of Education has awarded Middle Bucks Institute of Technology thirty four thousand nine nine hundred and two dollars that will be matched by the school for a total of sixty nine thousand eight hundred and four dollars. The grant will be used to enhance programs update updating curriculum, providing professional development on the new equipment and related credentialing exam and purchasing equipment that students will use to learn the new skills. Specifically, M B I T plans to purchase a walkthrough metal detector and S C B A air tanks for the public safety program, portable M I G and T I G welders and a Bridgeport milling machine for the welding technology program and sea sneak micro video inspection camera systems for the plumbing program. It is through grant opportunities such as this that M B I T is able to maintain state of the art, industry specific equipment that provides students with applicable training. Our Skills USA student leaders participated along with students across the state in a Skills USA virtual fall leadership conference. The students learn about empowering themselves to become a world-class worker and leader and a responsible American citizen. We would like to remind everyone that you can learn more about the latest happenings at M B I T by liking us on Facebook, following us on Instagram, Twitter and viewing our videos on YouTube. We look forward to reporting to you at the next school board meeting. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to keep you informed about what is happening here at Middle Bucks.
Thank you.
Um, superintendent report?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first, I would like to start off by uh announcing again for tonight's meeting that we had to move back uh to full virtual due to the technical difficulties from yesterday and did not want to risk uh those challenges again while I T and Communications Department is still trying to ascertain what uh created the problem last night for the listening audience. Uh, the update uh tonight has been broken out into three parts. Um, we have been for since being in the pandemic, uh since September, been providing a board uh biweekly updates uh to keep them informed and also through this uh form so that the public could be informed of the same information. Uh, at this time, I'd like to give the board and the public uh an update on the current changes that we have received from the state. And going to share my screen. Madam President, can you all see uh my screen?
Yes.
Okay. First and foremost, we wanted to start out by giving the current COVID nineteen situation in Bucks County and C S D as of today. Uh, as you can see, our incident rate has uh significantly increased and has continued to increase since our previous presentation as well as our P C R rate. We have gone from at one point being uh five percent or less to as of currently fifteen point three percent. Uh, our level of community transmission has remained at substantial uh for uh the fifth week in a row. Uh, and you can see the number of uh positive cases registered and then the current number of positive cases that we have had uh for in-person throughout this uh process and then the current current number of positive cases virtually, which is a new uh category that we have added to increase our transparency with our community. Uh, we to date can only identify a total number of one case uh as a result of uh school exposure. Often a question is asked by people, how do you know? And remember, we are only articulating what we do know and that is through a case investigation and contact tracing uh where which is done by the health department is the only one evidence of a uh result of school exposure that we have. So we're not saying that uh there aren't any more, we're not saying there aren't any less, we are reporting what we do know based on the evidence uh that has been found through the contact uh tracing and case investigation, the case investigation that is done by our nurses and our health providers. Uh, we received uh since uh the last time we spoke new requirements and expectations from the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Uh, the Pennsylvania Department of Education announced that all public uh schools would ha- would have to complete a attestation form, which is what we did at the last uh meeting uh that was held uh for the Board of School Directors. Uh, that authority was given to the Pennsylvania Department of Education through the Pennsylvania Department of Health uh as a director for health and safety. Oftentimes, uh, we have heard the question, what is attestation? Uh, and what you can see in front of you that it's a noun and is evidence or proof of something. So in that case, uh, we had to sign a form indicating that we would adhere to uh certain guidelines to operate schools and then provide evidence and proof that we are agreeing to abide by uh those guidelines. Uh, the previous Pennsylvania Department of Education procedures, uh, they included uh a countywide COVID nineteen uh data uh level of community transmission assigned based on three levels, low, medium and substantial. Again, we've been in substantial mode uh for five weeks now. Uh, once a county was in substantial mode for at least two weeks in a row, the Pennsylvania Department of Education would recommend uh but did not require it as uh school districts go full remote learning. Uh, we did not uh in our initial communication from P D E, we stuck with our our metrics and guidelines that we have previously uh communicated to the board and communicated to the community as the standards that we would use. Uh, again, Bucks County has been in substantial status for several weeks or more, as well as others, P A counties. The school districts uh responded with mixed response to the P D E recommendation. Uh, national, state and local health officials uh have provided different guidance during this pandemic. Uh, and we, and that is the reason why we uh stuck with uh what the plan that we had put in place uh and communicated to our internal external constituents because of conflict and guidance that we had been receiving. Uh, the previous guidelines that were rolled out on August tenth by P D E uh for determining instructional models is those that are shown on the screen. Um, you know, as of the twenty seventh, we are in our fourth consecutive week uh of substantial. Now, again, we've approached our fifth substantial week and you could see based on uh the old metrics, uh, we would be required uh recommended to be in full remote learning um method. P D E revised uh the protocols um on uh November twenty third uh based on uh the authority of the Pennsylvania Department of Health uh requiring us to attest to one of two things. Uh, I have, we have created a link uh to uh that document. Uh, I will not go through that document again for the sake of time, uh but it is available for anyone in our last board meeting and a copy of it is still available. Uh, districts, schools are one hundred percent virtual until such time as the county transmission rate is no longer substantial or to not be put in a full one hundred percent virtual uh method, the districts uh schools will offer an in-person option or comply with new requirements concerning a face coverings and the school closing rooms that depend on school specific COVID nineteen data. Uh, those were the choices. Um, the next step scheduled to return us for our return to school on January fourth, twenty twenty. Uh, we know that the district is already submitted after the board uh voted and uh signed off on attestation agreement. Uh, we are listed on the P D website as a district that is in compliance and returning our four. We chose option two, this is all or some of the students within a public school entity are currently receiving in-person instruction. Uh, we, we are following the revised face covering requirements uh per the November uh eighteenth Pennsylvania Department of Education order. Um, we also are following a new rules for when a specific school as opposed to the district will need to close and for how long it should COVID nineteen case count at a school gets to a certain level. Uh, I will tell you that um there's press that will provide a little bit of context of what currently would exist in our school district if we were a uh in-person uh status right now. Uh, our goal is to on January fourth to strategically open and hybrid model for all levels due to the level of incidence rate, P C R rate, the transmission and consideration for our staffing and operational levels uh and inability to do that. So right now we are still uh that is our plan unless something else happens uh to use a new uh system to do school targeted uh intervention and closures once we return on January fourth. The school targeted uh recommendations are based on small, medium and large school enrollments. Uh, this is a small schooled uh diagram of the process. I won't go through that because we have none that fit into that category, but we wanted the public uh to be able to see what that looks like if they had not. Uh, we are, uh, we do have schools that fall within the medium, which is five hundred to nine hundred students. Um, and uh the school targeted uh actions are based on your level of community uh transmission. So in this case, we're down here substantial. Um, it is then based on the number of cases that within a uh rolling fourteen day period. So it's, you know, the number here would be one to three students or staff. So it's staff and students in a building. Uh, these are the actions that we are expected to take based on our level of community transmission, the number of cases. Um, screen moved, I apologize. Then we also have when you hit four to six students and staff and then seven plus students for again for a medium sized building of five to nine hundred, which would be our elementary schools and our our middle schools. Uh, this applies to a large school that are greater than nine hundred students, which would have the standards that would apply to our high school. The same format exists uh based on the level of community transmission, then the number of cases that you have within a school at a fourteen day rolling period uh based on one to five students and staff, six to ten or eleven plus. Uh, it is si- important on each of those that we know that a significant and a widespread um outbreak may require moving to a more remote base instructional model more quickly uh than we have in the past. Uh, and the Department of Health provide proactive consultation assistance to schools should an outbreak occur. There is a concerns and considerations that uh we know of now currently uh looking at the new model is that uh managing the required closures that might exist within a short period of time with limited notice. Uh, we are trying to develop a plan uh to avoid that. Uh, we could hit a, a, a case number quickly and then have to take action quickly to be in compliance with what we have agreed to uh from the Department of Health and Pennsylvania Department of Education. Uh, we are trying to develop a system to avoid that, to minimize the impact on our families and our parents uh with regards to short notice. Uh, we are very concerned with what has been dubbed uh COVID fatigue. Uh, I will tell you that a lot of the conversation in meetings is that the community transmission rate, uh the number of cases uh seen uh that are really happening uh based on the community and external practices becoming relaxed. They are saying people are becoming too comfortable, um, not be adhering as strictly to the standards uh as they had in the past with initial onset of uh the pandemic and the mitigation efforts. Uh, there are three Cs that we are trying to be prepared to implement as they call them in our ability to minimize having to close a school and or how long a school would be closed. Uh, and the three Cs are dependent upon our ability to complete the case investigations, uh, the contact tracing and then cleaning and disinfecting as quickly as possible without compromising the health and safety uh expectations. It is important to note that those three Cs practices, depending on the number of cases that would occur based on the size of the school, would either be a targeted intervention at a classroom and then could uh escalate to an entire school depending on the number of cases. Uh, in case investigations and contact tracing and and cleaning can happen in a faster timeframe, then we are allowed with this um slight footnote that they provide us to not keep a school or a classroom closed as long as the length of time has been uh outlined uh on that chart. Uh, so our ability to do those quickly. We actually do have direct control and I believe we will be able to do cleaning and disinfecting quickly. Uh, our nurses do the case investigations, contact tracing for predominantly is uh dependent upon uh the health department. And our nurses do a very good job of supporting them uh at this week's meetings uh with the team from Bo- Bucks County Health Department. Uh, there's a lot of conversation of trying to make sure that we can ensure that that happens uh very quickly. Um, and that is one of the three Cs. Uh, we also want to make sure that we are able to get a quick response that verifying that the contact tracing has a positive check mark that says, yes, it's been done and we can have make sure the school either stays open and or opens quickly and shortens the number of days that a school would be closed. Uh, here are just some uh key links of information uh that we are making available uh with regards to level of transmission labels, uh the rise face uh covering requirements and a specific uh closing that you saw as a screenshot if someone wants to see the full document.
I'm sorry to interrupt um that those links that you just posted, Dr. Ben, are they going to be somewhere for the public on the website? Cause I'm sure nobody copied those down.
Well, yes, the presentation is posted as a PDF and then yeah, the links will be available for live, just click on, but they can see them right now. This is available as a PDF to the public right now. We just don't put the live PDF until it's presented, so it can't be altered.
No, 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 I just want to make sure that that's not something someone's scribbling down.
Oh, no, 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 it's it's easy and visible right now for someone to actually copy it now. Uh, but the live link will be posted, so they can just click on it after this presentation to the board. The other uh thing that happened uh um prior to Thanksgiving break was quarantine guidelines that were rolled out uh by uh the State Department. Uh, I'm going over this in high level form because there was the initial communication, but there was also uh what we would say further guidance that we kept uh working to seek from uh the Department of Health and the Department of Education because we felt it lacked some clarity in how we could apply this. Uh, the new guidelines uh were released by C D C. Uh, they are recommended guidelines on December first. Um, they uh reduced the quarantine for contacts. Uh, they still say that they recommend quarantine period of fourteen days. Uh, however, based on local circumstance and resources, uh they did provide options for a shortened quarantine and acceptable alternatives. Uh, those are quarantine can end after day ten without testing if no symptoms have been reported during the the daily monitoring. Um, then there was also quarantine can end after day seven with a negative test if no symptoms were reported during daily monitoring. So that came out, people got kind of excited and then we have to say, not so fast, my friend, as Lee Corso would say. Uh, because there were other standards behind this that if you look, the devil is in the details, as they would say. Um, to see a side by side, you know, currently we were operating on what was a recommended standard of fourteen days. Uh, the C D C rolled out their new recommendations on November thirtieth. Um, still saying fourteen days and offered the two options that I went over. Uh, the Pennsylvania Department of Health uh delayed uh their response to adopting uh uh the new C D C guidelines and then since uh that time and now leading up to this presentation, um, they have adopted those uh new guidelines. Uh, the Bucks County Department of Health wrote out some of its guidance to us on um uh no, uh, excuse me, December second. Uh, the Pennsylvania Department of uh Health uh guidelines now aligned with uh the recommendations from the C D C uh as an option. Again, these are options. Um, the future consideration and the decisions that we have to uh consider is how to apply the quarantine guidelines. Uh, the issue with the quarantine guidelines, uh just to be clear, is that it's not just a test. It actually has a requirement about monitoring this part around here in both cases of still monitoring for the fourteen days. So to qualify for this, it is also a test here, a negative test that uh has that correct after day seven, but then also continuing to monitoring for the fourteen day period without the test, not having symptoms, but also continue the monitoring of fourteen days. And that became a challenge when we asked the question of how do we make sure the monitoring continues? Uh, we believe that that is something that we can only try to manage uh systemically by applying it to our staff. Um, because we can't expect our staff to actually complete documentation of testing too that were attestation of the monitoring that continues. And of course, we're also already using our wellness check also a process each morning that will help facilitate that process with staff. Um, there has to be a conversation about the close contacts and there may be some updates since I developed this with regards to uh the bus ride and how they we manage that. And of course, uh, all of this and whatever we change, uh, we will be updating is our health and safety plan. Uh, we have not made made these adjustments in it yet. Uh, you will have some adjustments related that you hear tonight regarding athletics that one are mandates that we had to do and then two, a conversation from Dr. Best about some of the recommendations uh for the board to consider before they apply them to uh the athletic uh health and safety plan that have not been placed in there yet depending on the board's feedback uh from tonight. Uh, I will pause for a second um to exhale uh before our nurse uh Presler had some additional context uh regarding uh this situation, but to give you a chance to ask any questions and answers best I can as we're wading through the new work guidelines and regulations at this time.
Mr. Miller? Your hand is raised.
Yes, I just wanted to pick up where I left off last time. Dr. Ben, you and your entire administrative team keep ahead of the curb, curve. I know uh we have varying levels of appreciation, but you know, we, I I'm watching other districts ho- holding emergency meetings, uh, meetings that run past midnight and you know, you you've kept us clean. Uh, and I I think the work that our nursing staff has done is remarkable. Uh, especially in the absence of clear leadership at all levels of government. So, you know, again, my thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, no more questions?
Um. Mr. Martin?
Oh. Oh, yeah, Mr. Martin, you're muted.
That work?
Yep.
Okay. My question is, what what does Big Brother do if you are out of compliance with all these bureaucratic suggestions and regulations?
Uh, the attestation form basically says they can make us go full remote. The document that we had to turn in, they can actually come in and say you will be full remote.
That's it, though?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what, that's the only thing we know of right now that we saw in it. And uh they basically strip you of your your local choice and decision making uh as we understand it um at this point in time. Uh, now, uh, I will tell you from our association as a commissioned officer, remember I'm licensed by the state and commissioned uh by the Pennsylvania Department of Ed and Pennsylvania Department of Ed received this authority from the Pennsylvania Department of Health because they could not tell us to do this. It became a Department of Health directive uh based on health and safety. Um, I cannot legally not abide by that document, even if the board disagreed with it. Uh, we were told that then we were to inform uh the Department of Ed and then they would uh take it from there. But as a licensed and commissioned officer in the state, I am obligated to adhere to uh the directors, especially from a Department of Health uh declaring emergency.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
And I would think also the same would apply to like the nurse, for example, but our licensures.
Okay, we moving, are we moving on to uh Mrs. Presler?
That, Mrs. Cross, and I I just put my hand up. That Mrs. Cross and I just put my hand up.
Okay.
Not a question, just a brief comment, just to second what Mr. Miller said. I know that this is stressful. Obviously for our families and our children, but also for our staff and the people who have to do the planning. And you know, it is impressive and a testament to the work that's being done that you know, other districts have had some problems since the COVID spike sort of re began and we really have been ahead of the curve in keeping things so, you know, running as smoothly as possible under the circumstances. So thank you for all the extra effort everybody's putting in.
Ms. Carlson and board members, we will, in a weekly report, as the team, we met this week. I want to highlight the part about trying to develop a plan to minimize having to close when we come back, but not sacrifice health and safety standards. So one of the things that drives whether, you know, it's a rolling 14 day process that, you know, if Nurse Pressler wants to get a little bit more detail now, she may want to. But we're trying to be proactive that when we see that we're getting close to that number, if we have the ability and talking to Dr. Damsker and then other health officials, we would try to intervene and try to accommodate and make sure that our contact tracing, our again, we control the cleaning and disinfecting much easier than anything else, but our case investigations, which I still have the most confidence in the work that our nurses have been doing to make sure that we can punch all three of those Cs to make sure we can look everyone in the face and say, we've accomplished that. We still have a clean and safe environment and minimize what is one of our biggest concern with this plan. The plus is it doesn't tell you got to shift a whole district. So that's a plus side. The negative is, as superintendents have been talking about, is you could have a case issue that happens quickly to you and then it means short notice that you, and that puts our families in a difficult situation is my point. That's why we're trying to avoid that.
Thank you. And I want to thank the administration for everything they've been doing.
I do have a question here, you know, will there be a point where the numbers will become so high that we will stay in remote, remote learning?
We are actually trying to get understanding of what that looks like now from our healthcare providers. One of the things that was clear in the old model was they had standards that came out that we could go by. This is not, it's clear that it may end up being that it may be a total local decision. But one of the things that you know, that we've tried to do is not make it a personal decision, but base it on the science and the data that says, what is that? I will tell you that nationally, the one thing that they're all in alignment with now finally is the importance of trying to keep some form of in-person instruction because of the impact that it's having on the social, emotional, mental well-being. But also what they're saying is the data that we are still one of the safest places. But again, our local person who, you know, people have mixed feelings about, but I would tell you the one part that I pay close attention to that he said, as long as you can implement your health and safety plans, and I think that's important. One of the challenges we ran into was that we ended with so many people in quarantine that our health and safety plan was in jeopardy of being able to be effectively implemented, which is why we went through the month of November to where we did, because I could not look anyone in face and say that I'm really comfortable that we are actually keeping up with our health and safety plan because we had so many people in quarantine. So they do openly admit that your staffing and your operational capacity could be a determining factor that triggers, even though some may argue about the numbers and they're good or bad, or also the conversation about again, schools being some of the safest places. If we can't maintain our six feet, if we can't keep up with the case investigations and those types of things, or have enough staff to serve the students, that could present a challenge. That would trigger regardless of what people think about the science, if that makes sense.
Yes. Anybody have any further questions? Mrs. Pressler?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Dr. Ben asked me to present an update to you all from our last meeting. So the information that I'm giving you is from that time period of November 23rd to today. So Dr. Ben, already whenever the number's with you, I won't reiterate them. I think one of the important things to point out, though, is the fact that what a good decision was made by going virtual effective November 23rd. So they talk about this 14 day rolling period. So that would have been the start of it. Well, by Wednesday, we would have to have maybe closed one of our buildings. We had three teachers and six students who were positive. So that would, that one chart he showed us, it would have given us the guideline of possibly closing for three to six days. Or, you know, the contact tracing, cleaning the rooms, everything like that. So that definitely would have caused a struggle on our end. The other numbers as far as we look at, look at that you may not be aware of is during that time, we had 67 students district wide on quarantine, and that's a pretty big number. And then we also had 15 staff members either on quarantine or isolation during that time. So that doesn't count the three and the six that would have triggered the, you know, steps that we would to have taken. So looking ahead, I think everyone can agree, this is going to be the trend with our numbers. So the challenge is going to be, as Dr. Ben spoke about already, is putting our mitigation strategies into effect. A lot of this we do already when we have a positive staff member. Robert, I notify Robert, Robert notifies his team, or he does it himself. They clean, they do the bio blasting, I document that. So a lot of these steps are already in place. All of the district employees are working very hard to follow our established guidelines and follow our health and safety plan. Mr. Miller, thank you for thanking the nurses and I'm also going to thank the nurses because they're really working hard. The contact tracing case investigation in our buildings is done very specifically detail oriented and they're providing me with all the information I need to provide to the Department of Health. So things are going well with all of that. So thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Andrew?
Well, I just wanted to jump in if I could for just a second because I work with nurses at my day job. And if it were on the record that I had forgotten to thank the nurses, I would be off with my head with the nurses that I work with. So no, of course, thank you to the nurses and all the healthcare professionals that are involved, both at the county level and within our district, you know, obviously. In this kind of circumstance, you guys who keep us going. So just wanted to throw my voice into that as well.
Thank you.
Did anyone have any other questions? Thank you again for all you do. Dr. Best?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm here to bring some proposed changes to our health and safety plan for athletics that are board approved back on November 10. Unfortunately, we thought we had everything covered during that particular meeting. But subsequently, there have been changes that have been made to health guidelines as well as the PA masking order that require us to look at this plan once again. So to give an update and the overall plan with highlighted changes can be seen under item 6.1 in the new business section of the agenda. But to give you the highlights of that, the state masking mandate was passed on November 18th, I'm sorry, was issued on November 18th, which calls for athletes to wear masks during practices, competitions, as well as all coaches, referees, anybody participating other than swimming for obvious reasons is required to mask. And part of our updated plan requires athletes to wear masks during playing competitions as well as practices. To give some context, we've done a poll of the Suburban One League, which includes 24 schools from 21 different school districts. As of yesterday, 16 of the 21 school districts will be requiring all athletes to mask both during competitions and practices. And five of the 21 are undecided. No one has come out and said no to that yet. And that would be something that if they choose to do that, would be a direct violation of the Department of Health's masking order. So we are recommending that we move forward with that guidance. The second thing that's occurred since our last meeting, the Suburban One League delayed the start of the sports season, as I mentioned, on November 10th until November 20th because of the Montgomery County shutdown. The league voted on December 1st to delay the start of league contests until January 1st of the new year, I'm sorry, January 11th of the new year. What we're recommending tonight, in addition to the highlighted changes in our health and safety plan is that the Centennial School District delayed the beginning of our winter sports season by an additional two weeks, which would start us on December 21st. We have had the opportunity to begin some workouts prior to the shutdown for our winter sports teams. This would put us right in line to have the required 15 practices prior to the start of the league season. So it would not delay or cancel any of our league games. But it would give us the opportunity to avoid what we are told is coming with the Thanksgiving spreader events in this new. I don't know if this is now the 18th or 19th wave of COVID-19. But we know that Bucks County is surging with cases and we'd rather prudently delay the start of workouts so that we don't have to shut teams down. We have had instances already with winter sports with athletes testing positive and we did not have that in the fall. So the indoor season definitely, I think, is in more peril than than our fall season was for obvious reasons. The final recommendation that we would like to make is the cancellation of our wrestling season. For obvious reasons, wrestling is a, is a sport where there's a tremendous transmission potential of COVID-19 from infected athletes. Currently, seven of the 21 school districts in Suburban One have either canceled the wrestling season or are undecided pending a school board vote on wrestling. And in good conscience, as the principal, the outgoing principal of William Tanna High School and John Creighton, our athletic director, for us to recommend moving forward with wrestling, knowing what we know about the current spread of COVID-19, we think would be irresponsible at best and unethical at worst. So those are the changes that we'd be looking to have approved later in the agenda under new business. But I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Thank you. Dr. Best, I agree with what you're saying and understand the thought process. I know that parents will have concerns about their, their student athletes, their student wrestlers with taking a season off. Is there any program or plan in place to try to help them stay in shape? So that when they are able to return, it's not two steps back, but possibly just one?
Yeah, so they're twofold. One, off-season workouts, hopefully will be able to occur later in the spring if if the vaccination process goes as we're all hoping for it to do. There's always club outlets for athletes, but wrestling is a sport that we just do not feel comfortable with. And as evidenced by a third of our league is either up in the air or has already canceled at this point. We're not alone in that concern.
Mrs. Brancato?
Sorry about that challenged. Dr. Best, can you tell me which school districts are canceled?
For wrestling, if you give me one moment, I know off the top of my head Springfield, Sheltonham. But I do have to pull up another document if you just give me one second.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Why he's looking that up, evidently I just got an alert that there will be possibly another press conference tomorrow potentially with some changes from the state. So I would tell everyone to be on the lookout. I don't want to jump the gun with what I'm being told here that is going to happen until it's final. But if it is true, there could be some significant changes coming from the state tomorrow that we will, of course, push out as quickly as possible as we get. I don't want to fuel the speculation, but I do tend to stay connected with people who try to give me a heads up in advance. So we have something else that may be coming.
We keep hearing things like that. Once a day, so the leadership call, I have that leadership call every Tuesday. The they, they felt something was coming and it was based on the fact that the girls soccer team from Penridge played with a girl that they knew was infected. And there are presently 13 infected players from that team home from school.
Thank you for that. Dr. Best?
Yeah, so as I was saying, Springfield and Sheltonham are canceled. Haprow-Horsham, Pensbury, Abington are all to be determined. Nishamani is to be determined. And some of the other ones just answered in question. So I think as Dr. Ben shared and one other I missed, New Hope canceled as well. So I think that
Wait, I'm writing it down. So Sheltonham, Springfield and New Hope are the only cancellations?
Springfield is canceled as well.
So I have New Hope, Shelton and Springfield?
Correct.
Okay, so there can
We have, we have, yes, and we have confirmation from four other school districts that they're pending board approval. And a few others answered simply up in the air. And I'm not exactly sure what that means, but it's definitely not a yes.
Okay, so, so has, so has the coach talked to the parents of the wrestling team, especially the seniors? Do we know that?
No, the coach has not shared that with the parents yet because we're making the recommendation this evening based on the most recent medical guidelines that we've received.
Okay, do you know, do you know, you may not know, how many senior wrestlers we have?
I don't know offhand, but I know we've had a top number of eight wrestlers who have reported to any workouts we've held.
Only eight, okay. I'm just concerned, I understand what you're saying, but I'm concerned for the kids whose scholarships are riding on this senior year wrestling season. And as a wrestling mom, I know that's important. You know, I also realize that that is the closest contact sport a boy can play. Yeah.
No, and that is, you know, that's a tough consideration and we knew that similar to athletes who lost their spring season last year. When the mandated shutdown occurred, it's a really unfortunate out product of the situation we're in. But, but again, I come back to I simply can't in good conscience recommend that we participate in that sport.
Dr. Best, can I, I'm sorry to jump in, but just a quick clarification. You said there's three schools closed and four pending, meaning they're going to close, assuming their board approves it, correct?
Correct, yeah. And, and as Dr. Ben alluded to, I think we're going to be hearing some other things in the near future. I know the state of New Jersey has banned indoor youth sports for the month of December, at least, you know, we're not alone in this. And, and again, it is unfortunate for students who don't get the opportunity to participate in these activities that they look forward to. But I bring us back to, we are in a county that has one of the most aggressive surges of COVID-19 transmission. And, and, you know, we have to recognize that. There are some things that simply we're not going to be able to have.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. Dr. Best? Things aren't all doom and gloom. I did watch a press conference this evening where the vaccines are going to be, thanks to warp speed being distributed starting next week. Hundreds of thousands or hundreds of millions are going to be distributed. Why can't we postpone the wrestling season for three months? Revisit it in March and give the parents and the kids some hope that there could still be a wrestling season. That's not the most difficult sport to pull together, I don't believe. And I think taking a look at it three months from now would be a very wise thing to do rather than just to flat out cancel everything. Three months from now could make a big difference. Three months ago, we didn't have the, the the amount that we currently have in Bucks County. It went down significantly over the summer. It could go down between now and March. And I think a postponement rather than a cancellation would be a much better path to follow. And I think a postponement rather than a cancellation would be a much better path to follow. Right?
Mr. Martin, I think that's a great idea, but Dr. Best, wouldn't that be up to PIA?
That that would be up to the PIA. And so a similar situation happened, Mr. Martin, to your point with fall sports. There are some teams in District One that are going to be putting together some type of football season in the spring, those who opted not to play in the fall. And and again, to your point, you know, the the outdoor sports in the warmer weather seem to do better. But to Ms. Brancato's point, for wrestling, we don't have that option yet. PIA may have, the PIA has not shown any interest in in even acknowledging the danger of winter sports, in my opinion. And but their hand may get forced again as as Dr. Levine made some insinuations that we may be getting some restrictions coming next week. And and I don't want to speculate, but if there were an opportunity, if the season were postponed, absolutely, we'd be we'd be interested in exploring that for our students.
Mr. Panofsky?
Sorry, I forgot to put my hand down. Ms. Brancato asked my question about scholarships. Thank you.
Brancato?
So Dr. Best, if PIA doesn't postpone the season, couldn't we get in touch with the other school districts that choose to close if that's what we do? I mean, you choose not to have wrestling now? If that's what we vote on, couldn't we contact them ourselves and try to work something out so these kids can get the college looks that they need?
So that would be, again, that would be up to PIA. I know I filled out a survey today, put out by PASTA, asking if we would like PIA to delay the winter sports season, and and I said yes because that's the stance that our district has on that. I don't, I don't think, I mean, I'd like to do what you're you're requesting, Mrs. Brancato, but it's it's not that simple in order for that to occur. As I said, if the athletes decide they want to, they want to do club on the outside, which many of them do, the dedicated wrestlers anyway, who may potentially be participating in college. They they have that option. We're not telling them they can't do that. But as a school district, if we're to sanction that, you know, that that's a different story and a different level of potential liability in in sanctioning something that we know has a high degree of of potentially transmitting the virus.
Okay, so you just said something. Are, is our school district recommending for us to cancel all winter sports?
No.
So basketball will still be played? That's still going to be played?
Basketball will still be played, swimming will still occur. And indoor track will occur if the indoor track organization can find a facility to host them. Typically, all of our indoor track meets are invitationals that are typically held at Lehigh University. Lehigh has shared that they are not going to to host this year. So the the signers who handle indoor track are currently scrambling to try and find a facility that can be rented to host indoor track invitationals. So if indoor track does not occur, that would not be our decision. That would be due to a a lack of available facility for that to occur, not just for William Tanna High School, but for the whole Suburban One League.
Yeah, I would add to that. There's not, you know, if we if we decide to postpone, that doesn't necessarily create a better opportunity than collecting film. Many of the colleges themselves are in remote conditions. And there's no guarantee that they would be doing any personal scouting. So about the best we could.
Oh, Mr. Miller, they're doing personal scouting. They're doing personal scouting, I can assure you.
That may not happen if we postpone the season. If we postpone a season, the best we might be able to do is collect film with participants.
So, Dr. Best, can I just ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem.
Okay, so what does the wrestling coach say about all this? I don't even know who the wrestling coach is, but.
I I would imagine that that they would rather go forward. But, you know, i- in the interest of safety and, you know, we we can't, we don't feel comfortable making that recommendation.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dr. Best. Any community comments?
No community comments tonight.
Madam President, before you leave, the required changes for the attestation, which the board already voted on, and what we figure out to be in compliance with it, we will have to insert in the health and safety plan. So we don't have it at the meeting, I believe, so you will need to sign that before we go on break so that we are in compliance with return on January 4th, just to make sure the board is aware of that as a complete board. Because we won't be able to come back again prior to break. And was there any clarity or anything else with what Dr. Best presented with regards to the changes? We didn't put those recommendations in there, so he needs to know how to proceed with regards to those changes that he outlined that weren't already put in there, that weren't requirements already, but recommendations. So we want to be clear about what we're doing on the Athletic Health and Safety Plan.
In regards to the wrestling and the masks, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, the 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 masks, I mean, the masking is the masking requirement you're going to comply with. It only gray area with certain sports, but I don't think that's the real issue, but I think as you saw a lot of the questioning around the wrestling thing, that's that's a big thing, and we didn't feel like that's an island conversation. That's why we're bringing it here. So I think we want to be clear so that, you know, you're going to have to we have to update the plan each time and have requires board signature.
I understand.
Dr. Ben, by board signature, do you mean just Mrs. Crosson, or do you mean all of us?
I'm sorry, it's always as you have had, every time we updated, it's either a signature from the president, I hope they have the board, but it's the board, she's representing the board. So that's why this is a conversation.
So we're voting on this.
If I'm doing this correctly, right, Mr. Dr. Best, if I remember, the form has a signature on it?
Yes, e- each time the the plan is updated, it does require the school board president's signature.
So unlike.
This is at 6.1, isn't it? Like, we're going to actually vote on the measures in 6.1?
Correct, but I just want to make sure people understand that before she leaves this. That's why we because it it wasn't in the document because we didn't know which way you want to go. So they need to be thinking that way, is what I'm saying. That we're going to be asking forward, asking, you know, he's asking for his recommendation to be approved as part of it. We'll add this piece in there that wasn't in the form yet. We felt like there needed to be a conversation, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely. Did anyone else have any other questions on that? Is everyone okay with moving forward? We have no community comments, so we'll move to Mrs. Islandberg.
Consent agenda, five. Does anyone want to pull anything?
Also, if anybody wants me to pull up any documents, just let me know.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll move forward. Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.1A approves the minutes from the November 10th, excuse me, 2020 work session regular school board meeting. 5.1B approves the minutes from the November 24th, 2020 committee of the whole meeting. 5.2 Personnel. Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.2A approves resignations. 5.2B approves authorization to employ. 5.2C leaves of absence, approves leaves of absence. 5.2D approves precision of leave of absence. 5.2E change of status. 5.2F approves mentor. 5.2G approves award of tenure. 5.3 Exceptions to policy. Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.3A approves the exception to policy 202. Assignment with the district for student 14-18 to remain at Law College Middle School for the 2020-2021 school year. Parents will be responsible for transportation. 5.4 Appointments, none. 5.5 Waivers. Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.5A approves retroactively the donation and use of two buses for the Southampton Knights football team to play in a state championship game on November 21st, 2020. District cost per fuel and driver is $300. 5.2, sorry, 5.6 Conferences and travel, there is none. 5.7 Bids and quotes, none. 5.8 Assembly Speakers and Programs, none. 5.9 Contracts, Licenses, and Services. Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.9A approves new approves the 2020-2021 standard contract for services between Lakeside Educational Network and Centennial School District for additional mental health counseling services as per attached. 5.10 Textbooks, none. 5.11 Acceptance of Donations, Grants, and Bequests. Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.11A accepts the Ready to Learn Grant in the amount of $380,367. 5.12 Changes to Academic Programs, Positions, and Stipends, none. Moving along to new business, six.
Do you want to, do we want to vote on 5.?
Oh, excuse me, yes.
We need a second.
In that case, a second. I have a a quick question on waivers.
Did you second it, Mr. Miller?
I seconded. And I have a quick question on waivers. I'm shocked Mr. Martin didn't already ask. We did get a list of potential candidates from the Southampton Knights. I know our football program could use them.
Hopefully they beat the warmest of pioneers.
How dare you? The warmest, our boys will and girls, right, will thump your folks from Southampton.
So do we want to vote on that before we move to new business?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, can someone just explain to me what the Ready to Learn Grant is, please?
Good evening, everybody. Anthony Gabriel here. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Ready to Learn is an annual block grant that we receive from the state of Pennsylvania. It is historically used in the area of, at least here, in the area of STEM education. So we've been using the block grant to offset the cost of some of our STEM-based teachers.
Thank you.
Throwback, can we do that?
Yes, Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddixon?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bergnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crosson?
Yes.
900.
Is Islandberg new business?
Moving on to new business, anyone wish to pull anything from new business, 6.0, 6.1, or 6.2? I'll move forward.
Oh, wait, once again, I couldn't get my thing undone. Um, I would like to vote on the two items separately, please.
I'll read them separately then. Is that okay, Mrs. Mrs. Crosson?
Absolutely.
6.1, be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 6.1 approves the revised Athletics Health and Safety Plan as per attached.
Mr. Robo, can we, can we vote on this?
You second? Someone second that?
Second, second.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Okay, we ready to vote on 6.1?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Goddixon?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bergnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Crosson?
Yes.
6.3. Motion passes 6.3.
Moving along to 6.2. Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 6.2 approves the revised 2020-2021 district calendar to include all schools and offices closed on December 29th and December 30th, 2020, as per the attached. Is there a motion? And a second?
Yeah, I think Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, second.
Yes, can we please get a roll call?
Yes, on 6.2, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bergnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crosson?
Yes.
900 on 6.2.
For policies, 7.1 Policies Presented for Initial Distribution Discussion. 7.1A Policy 000 School Board Policies and Administration Regulations, Limitations, and Exceptions. 7.1B Policy 103 Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students. 7.1C Policy 247 Hazing. 7.1D Policy 249 Bullying/Cyberbullying. 7.1E Policy 252 Dating Violence. 7.1F Policy 304 Employment of District Staff. 7.1G Policy 317.1 Educator Misconduct. 7.1H Policy 348 Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Staff. 7.2 Policies Presented for Adoption, None. Second?
We do, we do have hand raised, Mr. Panofsky.
Thank you. I have a question about Policy 249 Cyberbullying. I read through every one of these policies carefully. Cyberbullying, the term is bullying is considered something that substantially affects a child's learning experience. How do we measure substantially? Who makes that decision? Whether a bully, the bullying is just affecting it a little, or it's substantially affecting their educational experience? And also, the secondary question is, is it okay if it only affects the educational experience a little bit? Because I would say it doesn't.
Typically, that is a a process you go through, do an investigation and re- review to determine whether it, so it really is the administration makes the determination. You know, I I have no, we we took this from PSBA. If there's the board's desire, we have no issue with removing the word substantial. I get your point about any concern with regards to impacting or you know, a student.
If I may, Mr. Panofsky, Dr. Ben, anyone out there, correct me if I'm wrong on this. Most of ours, I think, believe all of our schools take a stance of zero tolerance for bullying. So I think that the decisions, although the language came from PSBA, the investigations are done at the school level and please principals out there, correct me if I'm wrong, are we in zero tolerance for bullying regardless regardless of whether it's within the building or cyber? are we in zero tolerance for bullying regardless of whether it's within the building or cyber?
So I'll let Dr. Best time in, but that is my understanding since arriving here, and that's one of the reasons I said I, we haven't, I have no issue with removing the word substantial if that's the concern and the will of the board. Dr. Best, are you still here?
Yes, yeah, and, and Ms. Islandberg's correct, and, and she's part of those conversations, participating in policy committee. But no, I don't have an issue with that either, we want to make sure that all kids feel safe and comfortable in school, so if the verbiage change meets that requirement, you know, that's, that's fine.
So I, I would suggest then that, yeah, if we do have a zero tolerance policy in the school, we should have a policy in the district that reflects that, and I would ask that that word substantially be removed.
Are you talking about in the definition of 1 and 3?
I believe so, I have it, give me one second to pull it out.
It's 1 and 3 has substantial, I just don't want to assume, I'm, I'm sure that's what you're talking about, but I'll be clear that, that's, I just want to be affirmative.
I know for sure it was 1, which said like substantially affects the, substantially interfering with the subs, yeah. Both 1 and 3 substantially interfering with the student's education and substantially disrupting the orderly operations of the school, I would just ask that that word be removed. Minor, minor change, but I think it's, it's an important one.
I believe that what will need to, to happen is that one will need to, miss, I don't know who was reading, was that Ms. Islandberg, were you reading those, or Ms. Crossen?
That was me.
Okay, I would think we'd have to pull that one aside, Ms. Robo, and then a motion would be to pass it with the modification statement.
So these are only for introduction and discussion today, we're not passing these.
Correct, you're right, thank you for correct, I forgot, yes, you're absolutely right, so we'll correct and bring it back, thank you for reminding. Yep.
Question from Mr. Panofsky. Wouldn't adding substantial limit the definition of bullying?
That, that's why, the word substantially is already there, I'm asking them to remove it.
Oh, okay, yes, I would agree with that, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, you're correct, well, this is just the first reading, so you're right, we don't need to, we can fix it before it comes back to final approval.
Thank you.
I was just going to agree with Mr. Panofsky that the substantially, yeah, if you're gonna have a zero tolerance policy in the schools, then substantially in the policy doesn't make any sense, and it makes it a judgment call, and you take it out and you take some of the judgment out of it presumptively, so.
And I, and to that point, regardless of, of that particular word, which I do agree with taking it out, I absolutely get where Mr. Panofsky's coming from. There's an investigation for every case, so we have to go through those steps as a matter, as a matter of structure and fairness, and that's where the facts come out, and, and that lends itself to, to those decisions. So that's, that's, that would be a process anyway.
Did anyone have any further questions? Can we vote on that?
No votes required.
Oh, yeah, because it's just a, okay, so we have financials next.
8.1, be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approved the schedule of bills, investments, cafeteria fund budget reports, and general fund cash receipts summary, November 2020, as per the attached. 8.2 Approves the 2020 budget transfers for November, as per the attached. 8.3 Approves the pending bills list, as per the attached, and finally, 8.4 Approves the pre-approved pending bills list, as per the attached.
Second.
Do we have any board discussion and comments? Okay. Reports.
We need to, are we ready to vote on that?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky.
Yes.
Mr. Burdenic.
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg.
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
900 on the financials.
Any more discussions or comments?
I'm chairman, if I might, I, I just have a brief comment. I would really like to commend all of the staff, coaches, and students who participated in the fall athletic schedules under very trying circumstances. And in particular, we had three teams who deserved great recognition for winning the championship, a girls' cross-country team, and the girls' and boys' soccer team. I think they are to be commended by the board for their outstanding performance, as well as doing so under very difficult and trying circumstances. Also, the football team did manage to win, I believe, three games. So a successful fall season in spite of all, hopefully we'll have a successful, albeit without wrestling event at late, winter season. Thank you.
Here, here.
Absolutely agree, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Any other discussion? Okay, moving on to reports, District Policy Report. We had a Citizens Policy Committee meeting last week, the policies we reviewed were presented to the board tonight. Mrs. Islandberg, Bucks County School Intermediate Unit?
Yes, Madam President, one moment. Bucks County Intermediate Unit has been working to, and Dr. Hoffman have been working to update us real time as much as possible on any COVID cases that have come across within their services, and they are taking appropriate steps and making certain that they stay on top of all processes and protocols. I do have some good news coming out of Bucks County IU. The Bucks IU has an annual tradition of sending gifts to soldiers stationed overseas. More than 1,400 stockings were prepared and shipped to soldiers stationed overseas from the Samuel Everett School in Middletown last week. Shannon Hamilton, who helped get that program off the ground and who continues to work very closely, is an autism support teacher. She confirmed special measures were put in place to combat against the coronavirus. The program is in its fifth year and continues to grow. We'd like to congratulate and thank the Bucks County IU for the work that they do and this special program for our soldiers.
Just a very quick addition to the stockings that Ms. Islandberg was talking about, Shannon is a cousin of a very good friend of mine, and she has a very active Facebook group about this project, and I do believe that the either Willowdale or Davis Elementary teachers brought over a load of goods to send overseas to our, to our troops through this program, I forget which school it was, but it was one of them and it was on Facebook, so.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, PSBA?
Certainly. PSBA obviously was busy in Harrisburg lately trying to lobby our state legislatures to remember, our state legislature, excuse me, to remember our, our, our school districts and, and the things that we're dealing with and struggling with. We had a bit of a mixed bag coming out of the most recent, most recent stuff. Governor Wolf vetoed a bill that would have protected school districts against a certain amount of liability with respect to COVID-19 situations, and with that veto, I mean, that's part of the reason, unfortunately, if our full, if we're fully exposed liability-wise, it limits what we can do in terms of a lot of the in-person activities that we're talking about tonight, so that was disappointing. On the other hand, you know, we saw some things, I think, recently that are gonna turn out to be quite good, I think probably key among them is that the legislature approved something around the testing and Keystone exams for the 2019-2020 school year and any subsequent year, any subsequent year. You know, if the federal government has waived testing requirements, any student who completed a course in an academic content area associated with Keystone exam is not to take, not required to take Keystone exam related to that course. So in a time, and there's some other testing stuff, in a time where, I mean, I think if you poll our professional educators amongst the administration and among our teachers, you know, the value of over-standardized testing our students is often questioned for valid reasons, and particularly now amongst COVID-19, whether or not that's, this is a time when that strategy really doesn't make a lot of sense, and so our state legislature is doing stuff to protect us there, which is good news.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Dixon for giving my legislative report. But I will add that the governor's veto of the liability protection was a crushing blow. And I, I'm disappointed in his lack of leadership at this point. He started off during the pandemic doing a wonderful job. I think right now he's suffering from COVID fatigue. I, I don't believe that the governor realizes if a school district becomes troubled by the liability they face and you know, lawsuits could be, well, there, there's a tort limitation, but collectively, a school district could be a million dollars in the hole. Our fund balances are low, and the, the state guarantees everything, so the state would have to step in and pay the full freight. So without a liability protection, it, it's going to be a free rein for cottage legal enterprises to try and build class action cases. On the other side, you know, we need direction from the governor on limitations for the pandemic. We are in trouble. The, the state of Pennsylvania is one of the top 10 states in terms of accelerating COVID cases. We are number of active cases, hospitalizations, ventilators, and deaths was a leader in the country among the top 10 this past week. The governor's got to do something.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. MBIT, Mr. Goddickson?
We did not have any meeting since our last meeting, but MBIT continues to operate in hybrid mode with our Centennial students attending in person two days a week. But there has been a number of, you know, COVID cases being reported to the school almost on a daily basis, but they're still open.
Any communications? Any board communications? Any additional community comments?
No additional community comments.
Schedule of board meetings, calendar events, Mr. Burdenic?
December 22nd, early dismissal, elementary conferences, secondary professional development. December 23rd, all schools closed, elementary conferences, secondary professional development. December 24th to January 1st, all schools and offices closed. Monday, January 11th, at 5:30 PM, MBIT Executive Council at MBIT. And finally, Tuesday, January 12th, 7 PM, Centennial School Board Meeting, Work Session, Regular Meeting in the boardroom. That's your calendar of events.
Thank you, Mr. Burdenic. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Mrs. Brancato, Mrs. Brancato has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Brancato.
That's okay. Since this is our last school board meeting before the holidays, I just want to wish our community a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. I hope everybody gets time to relax during this crazy time and regroup, because next year's gonna be amazing, it's gonna be wonderful, and things are gonna start getting better, I promise. Thank you.
Here, here.
Anybody else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, who's in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, have a good night.
Night, everybody.
Good night, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.